It's all, it's on jam. We are live.
Apologies for the delay, printer issues. It's 7:06 and I will call the special meeting of the Board of Trustees to order. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with equal with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Heaton, would you take the roll call, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Mr. Stubbs.
Here.
This is Reed.
Here.
And Mr. Potter.
Here.
All were present, this is a special meeting, the purpose of which was laid out in the notice that was sent to many people and posted on the door of this room.
All right, with that, I will go to visitor comments first. Does anybody have visitor comments today? I know Julie does, so would you just state your name and address for the record?
Will you come up front, please, for the recording?
We're not on camera.
No, you are not on camera.
Just your voice.
Just your voice.
That's sad. My name is Julia, also known as Julie Smith. My address is 511 West Market Street here in Germantown, and I am honored and privileged to address you and bring you up to date on Sunshine in a Bag program. And this school year is our ninth year of serving the students of Valley View who are on the Reduced Rate or the Free Lunch Program. Right now, we are currently serving on 151 students. Currently, of these 1,794 students that are enrolled this school year, 220 of them are eligible for the free or the reduced lunch program. So at 151 students, we are approximately 69% of those that are eligible. Unfortunately, we do not provide these bags of food, which is 10 items of food, for over the weekend for the students that they can prepare for themselves if need be through cold cereal, the individual boxes of cold cereal, microwave popcorn, that type thing, if the need arises where they do have to fend for themselves over the weekend. They are easy to use, and again, we supply 10 items of food every week, things like the Chef Boyardee, Ravioli, that type thing. We serve the students head start through the 12th grade. And this year, as in last year because of the COVID, normally, we would be delivering the bags of food to the elementary through, I'm sorry, the head start through the 12th grade, but we were not allowed for the elementary through the senior high to place the bags of food in the lockers because of the COVID restrictions, the children were not even allowed to use the lockers themselves. So thank God for Amanda Phillips and her crew of volunteers from the staff at Valley View. They supply, they take the bags of food to the individual students' homes for us. And this has been a blessing, been a blessing also because especially for the junior high, for the senior high students, when we were delivering to the offices for the junior high students, senior high students have a stigma, and I do not blame them, of the peer pressure because at the end of the school day, prior to the school day ending, the secretaries would call those students down to the office to pick up their bags of food, and of course, that peer pressure, you know, the snickering and everything was going on. So Amanda even volunteered, had we been able to even do that, she volunteered with her staff to even deliver to, directly to the homes of the junior high, senior students this year. So again, we're thankful for that. As I said, we are serving 151 students, and prior to the Christmas break, we supplied for three weeks of food, and the last receipt that Angie Smith, who is the director, I'm just her assistant and spokesperson, she turned in receipts for $3,208 because our inventory supplies was very, very low. And dividing that into three weeks, and then for the 151 students that came out, a little bit higher for our average this year, at this time, for the three weeks of a little over $7, excuse my voice, $7 per student. Normally, it's about $5, again, because of the increase of food, et cetera. I know most of you men don't do the grocery shopping at your home, but Abra, I'm sure you do, and you know, you know, today, a loaf of bread costs more than it did two or three days ago. So again, we are experiencing the cost of our supplies that we do give to these special children. Also, I think I told you that we are serving approximately 69% of that 220 students that are eligible. We do not give food to any student unless we have a permission slip signed by the parent, the guardian, or the grandparent who has custody of that. And on the bottom of the form, they do need to list allergies, any food allergies, because of course, our church, for church of God, would be liable for any problems resulting from any allergies. Currently, out of the 151 we're serving, we only have, I'm sorry, three that have allergies, so we pack special food just for them. I think that brings you up to date on everything. Are there any questions from anybody that I have not answered so far?
You guys continue to do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Especially through the pandemic, and you guys still hanging in there.
Yes.
So my goal for tonight is, we have it in our budget for this year to make a donation, so I would, I anticipate us making a donation to you before you leave tonight, so.
Thank you very much, we appreciate. We do have individual donations from our church members. The Lions Club of Germantown has been very supportive, Germantown Rotary Club, several different churches in the area, especially the Methodist Church, of which Mark is a member, they supply most of our peanut butter and jelly that we give at the very last packing of the month to kind of tide the children over until we can serve them again. And those are, the peanut butter and jellies are our two highest costs, and fortunately, so far, the Methodist Church, our own members, have been supplying the majority of that for us, and even on sale. I know I'm just a peanut butter fanatic, and the peanut butter at Kroger's was a dollar and a quarter per jar, that was the sale price.
Right.
Normally, it's a dollar and a half. So again, the jelly, and if any of you go to Dollar Tree, we are giving the jelly, strawberry and grape jelly, fruit spreads, they're each at Dollar Tree. The week before this last packing, I went to four different Belvedere stores to get 151 bottles of the jelly, so unfortunately, Angie, excuse me, did not turn in any of our mileage for picking up these supplies. Angie has a credit card that she uses specifically for Sunshine in a Bag. She gets refunds, and she applies that directly to the next purchases, and she goes through Jam's Club and Walmart specifically, because she's found our best prices.
Thank you very much.
Pardon me?
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you very much.
My big question, because I got an email from my kids in school, and it, the email, the word is kind of funny, it says, it's going to be delivered to the homes of all students, and it says it in big bold letters, and so when I thought all students, I thought, you know, to me, all students means all students. But that, so actually.
Yeah, just the ones that we have permission slips lying for.
That makes more sense than what they say. You know, I don't need the food, I hope they're not giving it to kids.
No, no, just 151 of them, Mrs. Reed.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions I can answer? Again, thank you for your coming and the opportunity to represent Sunshine in a Bag. It's our privilege and honor to do this for these children.
Well, thank you for coming, and we appreciate everything you do. And I'll go ahead, what's the next resolution number?
Number 46.
I'll introduce resolution number 2021-46. Is that correct?
Yes.
Resolution to make a donation to Sunshine in a Bag. This year, we have budgeted for $2,000 to be spent, and that's the amount that I'm going to ask that we send to Sunshine in a Bag.
That is fantastic.
It's a second to resolution 2021-46. Any discussion of the resolution before we vote?
So the money is coming from the Fouts Fund, and Dr. Cross is responsible for doing all the research to find out how we're able to spend this. And through his work at the prosecutor's office, this is how your program fits the needs for the, the requirements for the Fouts Fund, so I'm happy to pass that along tonight.
Okay.
Mr. Heaton, is there any other comments?
I will call the roll. Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
This is Reed.
Yeah.
And Mr. Potter.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-46 is adopted. And I will get that check written tomorrow, and I will probably drop it off at your house.
That's fantastic.
I want to make a 2021 check.
Okay. Thank you also very, very much for your support.
And thanks for all you do for the kids.
It's our pleasure, it's our pleasure. Thanks again.
Thank you very much. Is there any other visitor comments tonight? Being none, I'll go ahead and turn it over to the fiscal officer.
All right, we're just going to work through the agenda tonight based on how the notice of the special meeting was in that same order. So the first thing we're going to do is take a look at the minutes from our last meeting December 13. Are there any corrections?
I do not see any corrections. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item on the agenda is to review the December financial reports and approve the payment of the December bills. And these reports are as of yesterday, the 29th, so there will be possibly a few last-minute items, and we will review those at the first regular meeting in January. I have given you the fund status report as of the 29th, even though the report says the 31st, it will not obviously include yet the check we just approved or anything else I might have to write tomorrow. Then there is the cash summary by fund, which is the total year from January 1st forward, and then for the month of December, the same report, cash summary by fund. We have the receipts for the month of December and the payments for the month of December. I want to point out a few of the items in the payment list. The first one is voucher 994, and that was to K E Rhodes Company for $11,283, and that was for the equipment installation for our new police vehicle. Then warrant number 50536 to the First National Bank of Germantown, the amount was $10,307.25. That is the semi-annual payment of the Valley View Water and Sewer District debt. We now have eight remaining payments. They total $82,458 with the final payment due December 1st, 2025. And finally, warrant number 50540 to the Treasurer of State for $7,790.50 is the final payment on the Ohio Department of Transportation, to the Ohio Department of Transportation for the 2017 State Infrastructure Bank Loan that the township received for the EB Road repairs. We actually paid that prior to the due date for the final payment. Mr. Holberg felt that he could slide that in to his spending this year, so that debt is behind us. Are there any questions about the financial reports for December? If not, I would like to ask for a motion to approve the reports, authorize the payment of December bills, and those are warrants 50536 to 50545, and vouchers 935 through 1041, and those represent payroll direct deposit, tax withholdings, and other electronic payments.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion of the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is passed. Okay, I have also sent you the amended 2021 appropriation, which reflect the actual spending we have done this year. The way that the township has done this for many years, I think it even goes maybe before Mr. Keener with Mr. Rohrbach, is of course, we approve permanent appropriations at the first meeting in January at the organizational meeting. The fiscal officer changes those appropriations throughout the year as necessary to pay bills, and then at the end of the year, we reapprove the appropriations for the entire year once we know what all the spending is. And just to note, the total appropriations for 2021 amended are $3,283,537. Now, we will approve this amended appropriation budget by resolution, and that's going to be 20, number 47, 2021-47.
So I'll introduce resolution 2021-47, a resolution to approve the appropriation budget for 2021.
Why don't we read item four on the, on my report, because you have the exact language, Mr. Stubbs, I think you want to use.
Resolution amending of the 2021 appropriations as attached to be forwarded to Montgomery County Auditor.
Is there a second to resolution 2021-47? I'll take Mrs. Reed.
Sorry.
She's been quiet up until now. Any discussion of the resolution? Hearing none, I will call the roll. Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yeah.
And Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Thank you very much, resolution 2021-47 is adopted. The next item on my list was indeed Mrs. Smith, who's already talked to us, and the approval potentially of the appropriation to them, the donation which you have done. I do not know of any other end-of-year payments at this point in time. Does anybody have any that they need to present to the board? And I think that will probably be the last check that I will write, unless there is an automatic payment that I'm unaware of, that will also be the last voucher that I process. Okay, the next item on the agenda is to review our 2022 draft budget. I sent you a lot of files, and they all came in that second email, so you can put away everything from the first email, go to the second email, and I will start through this. To begin with, Dr. Cross has requested, for everyone's benefit, that I give a little budget talk, I think I see phrases, Accounting 101 tutorial, before we discuss the budget. So he has listed several topics he'd like me to just explain to the board, as well as to all of those listening online or here in the room. First of all, we talk about UAN, and that stands for the Uniform Accounting Network. It is a software system that the Auditor of State developed and makes available to local governments such as ours, or AC. We pay a little bit less than $900 every quarter for using their software. It's a very, very good software, in my opinion. It does payroll, it does our accounts payable, our receipts, our physical asset inventory, does all the year-end reports, such as the W2s, 1099s, if we have them. They're continually updating it, there is constant webinars and other training that you can do on the system. I've been very pleased with it, and I think probably my predecessor was, and before him also. So that's, when you hear the term UAN, we're talking about the software that we use to run the fiscal officer's office. Okay, earlier, when we looked at the financial reports, we looked at the fund status and the cash summary by fund. So if we turn back to those, I want to point out which of the various, what are the various funds? The first fund is the General Fund 1000, and that is everything that doesn't fall anywhere else, goes through the General Fund. It is the trustees' basic fund that they use. The Police Department has numerous funds, the biggest of which is 2081, the Police District Fund. Most of their spending goes through that fund. And then they have a few smaller ones, 2082 Police Special Projects, 2083 Police Accreditation, 2221 Drug Law Enforcement, 2261 Law Enforcement Trust, and 2271 Enforcement and Education. And you will note that most of those other funds have fairly small balances, and really not very much activity goes through those. For the Road Department, they also have several funds, and those are somewhat specific to where the source of the receipts come from. The first fund is 2011, which is the Motor Vehicle License Tax Fund, and as the name would indicate, we get a payment for every motor vehicle license that's renewed here in the township. The second fund is 2021, the Gasoline Tax Fund, same thing, this money comes to us through the taxes that are paid when people buy gasoline. 2031, the Road and Bridge Fund, is basically the general fund for the Road Department, and it includes our road levy money that runs, that goes into there. And Mr. Holberg, if I misstate anything, please try.
The road levy is its own fund. That's 2141.
Okay.
That's the Germantown shared road levy.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's the shared one.
2031 is.
We get, we get the inside millage.
Right.
And 20, 2031, the Road and Bridge Fund. And we have the Road District Levy Fund, and exactly as Mr. Keener just said, that is where the shared road levy with the City of Germantown, the money goes into there, and then out of that fund goes the payment to Germantown for their share of that money, along with the uses that we use, that our portion of that money for. The next one is 2231, which is the Permissive Motor Vehicle License Tax. And that is the fund that receives the money that we actually levy on motor vehicle licenses. And you'll recall that earlier this year, we did add another $5 fee for township residents, and that, that fund will have much higher revenue next year as we resolve that. That, I think, is the last of the road funds. We then have our shared funds with the City of Germantown. Those include 2171, the park levy, 2172, the pool levy, 2191, the fire levy, 2192, the senior citizen levy. And pretty much all the money that comes in from the tax, real estate taxes that have been approved for those funds goes to all the, goes back to the City of Germantown. And then there are a couple of other funds that not a lot happens, we've already discussed one of them tonight, and that's 9752, the Fouts Trust Fund. It is a restricted fund that can only be used per the document that was given or signed by Mr. Fouts when he left the money to us back in the 30s, I believe, that it could only be used to help the poor children in the township, those underprivileged children. We also have a fund 4951, the Sunsbury Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. I understand that was established by the Coon family many years ago to make whatever repairs might be needed up at the Sunsbury Cemetery. And the last one is a new fund this year, which is the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. And so far, the only thing that's happened in that fund is we put our first payment that we received from the state as part of the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act. We will get another $151,000 next year. Okay, you'll notice on the fund status report, at the very bottom on the right, below the fund totals, which at this point represent $1,601,874.80, we have two smaller numbers. The available primary checking balance is in our account at First National Bank. The pooled investments, we, we share in the Star Ohio Account that the Treasurer of Ohio has set up for political jurisdictions in Ohio. We, we make payments into Star Ohio, they invest it for us, we get a small amount of interest, not much more than we get from First National, but nobody's paying very much right now. Okay, moving on from those reports, I'm going to turn you back to the budget reports, the copies that I've given you. The very first item that I've given you is the, sorry, let me catch up with where I am. Okay. All right. I've given you the schedule of property taxes for next year. It, it looks like this on the first page. The inside millage we're going to receive primarily goes to the Road and Bridge Fund and also to the General Fund. It's going to total $184,658. And then outside of the 10 mil limitation for, for property taxes are all of the fund levies that have been approved by the residents of the township. And that is the Road Improvement Fund, the one we share with Germantown Police, two funds, two levies for the Police Department. Fire Fund, Fire and EMS Fund, which we share both of them with Germantown, the Pool Fund, Senior Citizen Fund. What's not on this top page is the Parks Levy, because at the time that this was repaired, we did not have approval for the Parks Levy. So we, we do know those numbers over next year. And each of those numbers that you see on this Schedule A will, are going to be in the review of each fund's receipts when we get into looking at the budget. The next page is the same levy funds listed, a little more detail about when they expire, when they were voted in, what the millage rate is, and of course, two of them, they've noted, one expires next year, well, actually expires this year, but we're putting it on the ballot for next year, and that is the, the Senior Citizen Levy, and also they have indicated here on this one that the Park Levy expired this year, but of course, it was approved as a replacement last month. The third page I've given you talks about the local fund distribution. And we get this money from the State of Ohio, they're estimating next year $23,010. That all goes into the General Fund. This is money that five, 10 years ago was a significant amount. A couple of administrations ago here in Ohio, there was a big attempt to try to increase the rainy day fund at the state level, and the way they did that was by cutting the distribution back to local governments. So this $22,000 for next year would have been significantly more about 10 years ago. Now, all of this information that I've given you about the levy money will be appearing on our Certificate of Estimated Resources that the county auditor will give us sometime after mid-February, along with our budgeted expenditures, and that will tell us what we're allowed to spend next year. I will also tell him what kind of receipts we will have from other sources besides tax levies, State of Ohio, inside millage, et cetera, et cetera. All right, let's see, what else have I missed? Oh, Dr. Cross asked if I would explain the homestead rollback amounts that you're going to see in the budget. going to see in the budget. As property values increase, the, the rate of the tax levy goes down, so that a homeowner does not pay any more, you know, let's say his house goes up by ten percent, he's not going to pay ten percent more on the levy he or she approved when the levy was first voted on. And the state gives us some portion of that back to us as a rollback, so we do get that. The other thing that's part of homestead and, and of the rollback account is the homestead money, and, and if you listen or read the paper right now, the county auditor is making a big push for senior citizens to apply for a homestead credit. Uh, the homestead credit used to be available to anyone over sixty-five, it is now an income-based credit for those people applying new, I believe the others are all grandfathered in. It reduces their property taxes by, I think it's twenty-five percent, I could be wrong about the percentage, but then the state gives some of that back to us. So we will be seeing in our receipts, in the budget, an account called homestead and rollback, and that's what that represents. And I think that's everything Dr. Cross has asked me to explain.
Thank you, Mark.
Hopefully that wasn't too lengthy and hopefully not confusing. With that in mind, I suggest we start with, uh, the police department. Now, Chief Antic and Mrs. Close prepared their own version of the budget, which is a spreadsheet with a single column of numbers. I have taken those numbers and put them into a wider spreadsheet that compares twenty-twenty-two to our budget for twenty-twenty-one, the one that, that you just approved, the amended one, as well as our total year spending this year and our total year spending last year.
There is another one where it compares it, you actually will have two in your packet if you want to look through. There's one with just twenty-twenty-two, and then there's a, yeah.
So if we look at the very first fund in the police department, which is twenty-eighty-one, their primary fund, and let's go back, let's start with the right column, we're going to work our way to the left. The far right column is twenty-twenty's actual year. Uh, they started out the fund at the beginning of the year with a fund balance of two hundred and twenty thousand and change. We brought in receipts of seven hundred and ninety-one thousand. They spent six hundred and eighty thousand last year. Of course, you'll recall that we did, um, reduce their spending by a significant amount because we used coronavirus, um, money to offset some of those police salaries. But they ended up, the end of twenty-twenty with three hundred and thirty-one thousand and change in their fund account. We started this year with that, and looking at column G, the second one from the right, this year's total receipts are just under seven hundred and ninety thousand. Spending is nine hundred and nineteen and a half thousand, and they're going to end up with a fund balance this, uh, at the end of twenty-twenty-one of a little over two hundred and one thousand. We'll start out twenty-twenty-two with that. I'm estimating they're going to get receipts of seven hundred and sixty-three thousand. You'll see the real estate tax, that's identical to what we looked at earlier from the county. The homestead rollback money, the two of those actually total what the county put on the first report that we looked at. And then I have put in some minor other receipts, as well as sale of fixed assets, and that is an estimate the chief has made for the sale of the old police cars. And with that in mind, Chief, I will turn it over to you to talk about the expenditures.
One, one thing that we did this past year is we had, we purchased two cruisers. Um, the upcoming year, we're not purchasing any. Um, the car, what, what we tried to do is we tried to purchase a cruiser a year to replace a cruiser that goes out of service. So, uh, the current car that's up to be replaced is the K-9. We're not, we're not outfitting it, another K-9. The K-9 cruiser will stay with the K-9 and that officer for the duration of the K-9's career. Um, there's no reason to throw a bunch of money, so we're, we're not purchasing a car this upcoming year. That was, um, quite a big expenditure for us last year because Ford changed their dimensions of their car, which then, then the old light bars didn't move over, so we had to purchase new light bars, so there's a lot of, um, expenditures that went into those cruisers. But normally, we weren't counting on, number one, but then once they come in and they start outfitting them, they're, they say, uh, you know, you need to get a new lighter light bar, whatever. Um, I think it's a scam between the people that make light bars and Ford, but that's just me.
My brother-in-law.
Yes, so, um, I'm sorry. Um, we figured out our salaries, uh, for the upcoming year. Um, I spoke in length with Rear Superintendent Holbrook, uh, the COLA, uh, that was announced was five-point-nine. Neither one of us have that kind of money to, to give a five-point-nine increase, however, after reviewing our funds, we believe that we can handle a three percent increase, so I added in a three percent increase into the budget for the officers. Um, other than those, those are probably, well, our salaries, of course, are our biggest, uh, expenditure. Um, one thing from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one is, at the end of the year, we did hire Ms. Close and, uh, to replace Mrs. Warbeck, and then once Mrs. Warbeck left in early twenty-twenty-one, that, uh, that we were just paying Ms. Close to, to do the job. So we, um, as I looked through this, it looked like we actually reduced money there, but that was kind of the reason why. Um, but other than that, salaries are our biggest, uh, expenditure. Um, for the most part, I went through with, uh, Ms. Close, and we looked at all of our, um, funds that we have, uh, and left pretty much everything the same as we had in years gone by. Um, so there's not much deviation for, for, say, uh, vehicle repair. I think we kept that about the same, um, or if not the same. Travel and meeting expenses, we keep the same. We have those funds there, um, we don't always, as Mr. Heestan was saying, there's little funds that may not, may not even have any money come out of them, but we have those in case we get an opportunity that maybe we get a training for an officer, and we use those kind of funds to put them up in a motel in another city, uh, or for their travel expenses to get them to that training, which then benefits us. Um, other than that, uh, gasoline's probably going to be a pretty big hit this year, I think. I think we've all seen that here in the last, what would you say, six months? Um, so, those are the kind of numbers that kind of scare me, because you never know a commodity like that, what it's gonna, if it, if it's gonna skyrocket or if it's gonna drop down. I hope it drops down, but we prepare for the worst. So, for example, in that category, I think we put thirty thousand, which was up from, uh, twenty-five thousand last year. Um, I'm just kind of scanning through, I don't know if you had a chance to review it, if you have individual questions.
Just, sure. The hospitalization, twenty-twenty was, um-
Hundred fifty-eight thousand?
Hundred and thirty-nine.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And then kind of thirty thousand dollars in the last two years.
Yeah. That's another-
Ten thousand from last year.
Well, we went up, uh, from last year because we, we tried to do it conservatively and put a hundred and forty, and then went, I believe we went past that, didn't we, Mr. Heestan?
Yes.
So we upped it, uh, in this year's budget by thirty thousand dollars. Not that we hope to spend that, but in case we do spend it-
Does the state or anybody help us? Want to put that, any back on, money on that?
No.
We gotta, we gotta come up with that somewhere else. We gotta save some of that somewhere else.
I believe that's because we cover the, you guys are on a high deductible health plan, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. And, uh, part of the, the township, correct me if I'm incorrect, picks up the high deductible health plan, uh, premium and the, um, high deductible.
That's just a big increase.
Yeah.
Two years, thirty thousand.
Yeah. Well, and what we found is that this, like I said, uh, if you look at the numbers to the right of that number, uh, a hundred and seventy thousand, we had it at one forty, and I think we went to one fifty-eight in that area, one fifty-eight, one sixty-
In the original, something, in the original budget for the year.
Right, so we, we went over, and so that's why we said, well, we're going to put it at what, where we're at.
I understand, I was just wondering, if we can help somewhere with the money, or we gotta use the money, get the money from somewhere else.
Right, right, I understand.
That's all I'm just, gotta, uh, adjust for that-
Right.
-in the future, it looks like, or something.
I make it, like, Mark Cross, seven-four-four, first cyber. So we pay the, the health insurance premiums, plus, plus we pay their out-of-pocket deductible costs.
Right, I, I understand, and I'm just saying, thirty thousand dollars increase that is going to be coming from somewhere else, something, that's all I'm saying, I'm just bringing that up.
Like a premium increase, and I don't recall how much the premiums is.
Nine percent?
Nine percent. So it's going to be for sure part of that.
That's just one, like, that you don't-
Right, right, exactly.
So we just gotta-
We hope that nobody gets sick and doesn't use it at all, but that can't say that's going to happen, so we just prepare for the worst.
We just gotta watch for that.
Yeah.
The premiums are part of this, the rest of it is the deductible and the stop-loss payments that we're responsible for.
Okay.
Premiums also go up as the population ages too, so.
Right, I, I understand all that, all I'm trying to say is, gotta come from somewhere. And we only got so much money, if, if it takes that to do that, then something else has got to lose. So, and that's all I'm bringing up.
Um, again, we did do the two cruisers, and we're doing none, so it, it doesn't take as big a hit because the cruisers are thirty, thirty-three, thirty-six thousand, and then with all the, the new equipment we had to purchase, you're probably talking eleven to fifteen thousand, somewhere in there, um, so-
This year's covered.
Right, where, yeah, so, when, when we look at that and say, oh, we're going up thirty, well, there's one car, we're not purchasing a car this year.
Right.
We, what we have to look out for-
Remember that next year?
Yeah, exactly, what's, what's going to happen in the procedure, the years to follow, so, I understand what you're saying.
That's all I'm just trying to say, just bringing that up.
I think one of the things to note is that we are eating into our fund balance of this fund. Of course, last year it helped a lot when we were able to take some of that coronavirus money and put it into the police department budget. Uh, but this year, we dropped our fund balance from three-thirty to two-oh-one, and if this budget comes in exactly as budgeted, we'll drop it down to eighty-five thousand. So, at some point, we're going to have to think about what do we do with the police department? Do we have to go out for another levy? What are our options?
That, that, that's exactly what I'm trying to say.
I believe, if I'm correct, it was like a hundred, the, the money that was given to the police department from the coronavirus fund was up right around a hundred and twenty thousand?
It was closer to one forty, but I don't have the exact number in my head, I'm sorry.
So, uh, other than the hospitalizations, you know, increasing, Chief, what do you believe the difference? I mean, if, if COVID money was given a hundred and forty, we'll say thousand, because my theory is if we would not have given you guys a hundred and forty thousand, the budget at the end of this year would be sixty thousand.
Right, I think, well, another thing is, we were, we retain officers. Currently, all of our officers are topped out. They're, they can't, they're, the only cost, or the only increases in pay is, is cost of living, uh, that they would get. Um, that's a good thing, and it's a bad thing, because, it's a good thing because we have experienced people that are going out into our community and doing a good job. It's a bad thing in that, you know, everybody's topped out and we're, we're paying them that money, so our, our salary budget is at the top.
Okay.
I mean, now everyone, all of the full-time officers, myself and the sergeant included, are topped out. Um, and again, it, it's a give and take. Um, short of someone leaving and us replacing that person-
With a lower pay.
With a lower-paid person, um, but we do have a schedule, uh, a, uh, step schedule one through five. Um, you know, that's going to be the same every, every year now. That's, that's going to be a constant, I guess, unless we do the three percent. So, um, that's one thing we can look at, or, we, we don't have to, we're not going to take money away from you.
Right.
So, it's a good starting point to say, okay, we have this much, what can we do with what we have left? Um, so-
I'm just bringing that up, that we gotta, can't wait till it's all gone.
Yeah, you, you have to, uh, be mindful, and, um, Tyler Remmer was big on that, pointing that out when he came in, yeah, and discussing that. So, it's not like something we haven't thought of in the last, what, year and a half, two years, but-
I'm, I'm just saying.
Right, right, you're seeing it for the first time, and going, wow, yeah. I understand.
Now, one of the things that you need to, we actually need to decide tonight, because the first two line items on the expenditure section of their budget are the trustee salaries and the fiscal officers' salary. And as you know, currently, the trustees have been taking a twenty-five percent decrease over what was, is allowed by the state, uh, based upon your, your election. Each of you, of course, um, Mr. Stubbs, Dr. Cross, even Mr. Potter, have bumped up from where your predecessors were because, um, of your election this, in November. If we're going to stick with the twenty-five percent reduction, and I think the eighty-five-hundred that I budgeted is certainly adequate. If, if you decide that we're going to not keep that reduction in twenty-twenty-two, we may need to go back and revise some of these numbers before we meet on Tuesday. So it almost is something that Mr. Stubbs, Mr. Potter, and even Dr. Cross kind of need to agree upon tonight, so that we can come into Tuesday already making that decision. The other thing is, you should also be comfortable tonight with the three percent salary increase for all departments, starting with the police, you know, and as we move down the line, we'll see that with everyone. So those are two things you might want to talk about before we finalize what you want done with the police department.
I'd like to kick something in here for Mr. Potter's benefit. Mark Keener, seventy-eight, sixty-five, Jamaica. So, um, back in twenty-seventeen, we really taken a serious look at primarily the general fund, um, and it was being decreased by about twenty thousand. There are some reasons for that. Heestan mentioned earlier, things like, um, the, uh, local government fund has been being cut back, uh, the state changed their laws on inheritance, so that we lost, like inheritance money, you know, the inheritance taxes, personal property taxes, so a lot of things changed, where we were very, very flush with cash fifteen years ago. We started losing revenue sources and money just kept coming down, and we were dropping about twenty thousand a year. So we had, actually, four years ago tonight, we had the same meeting and ended up proposing a twenty-five percent salary reduction for all the elected officials, including himself. Um, at the time, at the twelve-thirty-one, twenty-seventeen, the fund balance in the general fund was forty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars, so, I mean, sinking and sinking fast. Um, with the salary reductions and also, uh, other budget cuts, I mean, I cut expenses from the bone, uh, we ended up reallocating, we've got the Big Towers back here, that was, uh, we get eighteen thousand a year from the state for that, that was going to the police budget, but we ended up passing a resolution, January second, twenty-eleven, to take that money from the police budget and put it into the general fund. Uh, a few other things went into it, but anyway, the general fund, over the years, from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, we increased it by twenty-four grand. From eighteen to nineteen, it went up another forty-nine. From nineteen to twenty, it went up another fifty-five, and then from twenty to twenty-one, as of tonight, um, it went up another roughly twenty-two thousand. So I believe, uh, I don't remember the exact number from Mr. Heestan, uh, but I believe the general fund's sitting somewhere around a hundred and ninety thousand as of today. So, over the course of four years, literally, from today to four years ago, or from four years ago, we've gone from forty-five thousand to the general fund to a hundred and ninety-two thousand, so almost a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase. Part of that was- Part of that was due to the salary reductions. Um, my goal when we started the salary reductions was to say, once the general fund got back up to about a hundred and fifty, we could revisit this and possibly reinstate salaries.
That's, that's, that's what I was about to ask, where are we thinking is our comfort zone?
Well, my, my comfort zone was a hundred and fifty. I was not in office when it hit a hundred and fifty. I've never really communicated that to Mr. He Stan until today, so he's probably going for that comfort zone. Um, so I mean, I, I feel comfortable from a general fund standpoint to reinstate this. Now, also, one of the things you're probably not aware of is that trustee salaries, based on your assignment, um, for instance, uh, Mrs. Reed is currently the road commissioner, so her salary is trustee, which is roughly, I'm gonna say about a thousand bucks a month, that mark about twelve a year, four thousand?
It's something.
Something, we'll just say twelve thousand a year. So half of her salary, because she's the road commissioner, comes out of Jeremy's budget. Jake is the police commissioner, half of his salary comes out of Joe's budget. Um, so when Mr. He Stan is talking about the numbers currently, as we're discussing the police budget, the eight thousand dollars, that's half of the trustee's salary, so if the money gets reinstated, salary reinstated, the full amount, you're really at the police level, looking at roughly three thousand dollars, uh, hit the police budget. Same with the road budget. And then at the general fund, we're looking at roughly a six thousand dollar increase, uh, by reinstating everybody's salaries, so. And looking at the budget Mr. He Stan prepared for the general fund, it looks like we're still looking to increase the general fund from this year to the end of next year by roughly fourteen thousand. I won't swear to that. Um, but anyway, that's, that's where the numbers are, so the twenty-five percent increase is really spread amongst several budgets, and it's not a huge hit to any one.
Thank you very much.
So if you decide that next year you do want to reinstate back to a hundred percent, we'll run some numbers between now and Tuesday, and, um, give you some revised numbers from what we've seen tonight. Otherwise, I think we're good with what, what is in here.
The other thing that I think we need to say is, if we do decide to, or the board decides to take the hundred percent, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, that there's anything in the O R C or anywhere else that states that the board has to take a hundred percent of the salaries, or they can't take a hundred percent of the salaries out of the general fund. So if they wanted to go back to that, if they felt comfortable that a hundred and ninety-two thousand in the general fund was enough to support the full salaries of all three trustees and the fiscal officer, that would help each department. You know, the chief of police and myself, the road department, that'd actually give us a raise, along with them getting their full salary back.
Let me elaborate on that, so, so right now, the whole split Jeremy's talking about, the split trustee salaries, that was also done as a budget cutting, or budget helping measure, is the general fund being increased, so actually, I think.
So, so it used to be, this is your.
Every, all elected official salaries came out of the general fund, and then just as a budget measure, then it was like, well, you're in charge of the road department, so half your salary should come out of the department.
Theoretically, it could still be seventy-five, even twenty-five.
Yeah, you could split it, you know, yeah, based on that, so.
Right now, it's fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty, yeah, and you'll actually be given, if you haven't gotten, well, no, if you're zoning right now, which is general. So let's assume you take the road department, Mr. He Stan will start giving you on a monthly basis a, a piece of paper that you sign that says, I spent fifty percent of my trustee time overseeing roads and fifty percent overseeing general township duty.
Okay.
So where Jeremy's going with this is, each year, like that happens.
I understand, but we, we haven't got yet, I didn't know if his is going up or down.
I'm, I'm gonna kick in one more thing, if I may, because I need to get out of here. Um, if, if we can switch gears a little bit to the shared budgets.
I would rather wait till we get there. I think it's confusing to do multiple funds at one time, unless the trustees want to do that. My preference would be to finish the police and move forward.
If you have to leave early.
It's only take just a minute, the trustees will be going. Thank you, Mr. Stubbs, I appreciate it. But Mr. He Stan, I noticed in the shared budgets with the, or the shared levies, that you're proposing to take the remaining balance at the end of next year down to a thousand dollars per fund, and I think you need to review, and the trustees need to review the levy agreements that were signed years ago with the city and township, because those agreements, most of them, I believe, specify a holdback every year or basically a rainy day fund, so they are not supposed to be getting a hundred percent pass through. So then they're supposed to, the, the money in these agreements is specified to be a use for, um, capital expenditures and repairs, so I don't think you can technically take these down to a thousand dollars and just pass a hundred percent of the money down.
I'd be happy to look at that.
Yeah, I think it all needs to, I, I looked at that before, uh, when Judy first came on board, the first thing she did was send me an email that says, send me all the money. Yeah, I, I looked at the, the history and determined that that was not an appropriate thing, so.
Thank you for that history.
Do those have a percentage that we're supposed to be keeping back?
Ten percent.
Ten percent?
Of the annual held back for, uh, capital expenditures and repairs. So, I don't remember if you were here or not, when the liner needed replaced, but the only reason we were able to take care of that is because we had held back that money, uh, from the pool fund. So we were actually able to give the city the amount they need to repair it. So without hitting the city budget, so, I mean, if it goes down there, it's spent. I mean, seriously, and, and truly, this money also belongs to the township residents, I mean, half of that money comes from them, and so this is really the only way the township has any control, because here, again, once it goes down there, the city has a history of just spending whatever they want, and, uh, even though I know that, uh, with some of the budgets, uh, the pool in particular, there were suggestions from the oversight committee, which if you go back to the levy agreement, the oversight committee is supposed to recruit the budget, and the city and the township were supposed to act upon the oversight committee's recommendations. Uh, there were recommendations from the oversight committee to give bonuses to the lifeguard, and the city's like, no, I can't do it. So, I mean, my, my point of all this is all twofold. Number one, I don't think you can take this down, there's supposed to be a holdback. And number two, you need to hold back the money anyway, because of what I've seen of, I'll say, irresponsible spending on the city's part of it. With that, I'm done.
I'll look into it, thank you for sharing, so.
Yeah, I think Mark and I met with Judy and Pat, so, well, what's that been, five years ago?
Five years.
And, uh, that's where we came up with the agreements, and there was the ten percent holdback, and they, they had mentioned wanting to update them at some point, but that never happened, so there should be a ten percent.
They were wanting to update them in their favor.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. There should be a ten percent holdback for each levy fund that we collect.
We'll look at it and then deal with it on Tuesday.
All right.
But we'll get to those in, in a little while.
Thank you for indulging me.
No problem.
Thank you, Mark.
So, the discussion of the twenty-five percent, and Mark will explain how a portion of it ends up in every, in the road, in the police, and of course, in the general fund. What is, what is it you would like to do for next year?
I would like to keep the reduction in place for at least one more year, and then discuss this, uh, maybe August, about reinstating, because at some point, it's gonna have to go back, I think, to the full, um, full pay. I think Jackson Township's back on full pay after they were, they were, had reduced as well, so I, um, I think we need to discuss it.
Mark Cross. Yeah, I, I agree, I think, you know, let's stay with twenty-five percent reduction, uh, but something, you, you may want to get some figures, again, if we go to pay one hundred percent of our salaries out of the, of the general fund.
About.
Again, that would be a.
Well, about the seventy-five, twenty-five.
Well, it's, it's different for each, for each trustee, you know, what, depending on what, you know, you're overseeing.
So you're saying, instead of taking fifty percent out of the group, go, reduce that to twenty-five, take seventy-five percent from the general fund?
Yeah, I mean, you could do any type of scenario.
Right.
And that would help them, so.
Actually, that's the bottom line, yeah.
Let me tell you what we.
I think, you know, I think we start off, this is just my, start off, take the twenty-five percent reduction and investigate with that reduction, if, if we pay one hundred percent of all our salaries out of the general fund, because that's gonna be a bonus to both the.
Right.
And the, they're gonna, they won't have that money coming out of their budget.
So with the, with the general fund, just note that we will be losing fifty thousand out for the water district in the next four years.
Or eighty-some thousand.
Well, we're getting the thirty from the cemetery.
From the cemetery, so the net will be around fifty.
Fifty thousand dollars in.
I think, yeah, we started with twenty-five percent reduction, and then you try to keep everything else the same for now.
Yep.
I, I, that doesn't, that's a physically sound idea.
Right.
Um, I'm just, if I understand this right, I just, like, so we get an increase of twenty-five percent?
No, we're keeping the twenty-five percent reduction.
We're keeping it twenty-five percent, so nothing changes.
Nothing changes.
Okay, fine.
And from the earlier conversation, and we will approve this on Tuesday, um, the way the allocation is between funds, the road superintendent, currently Mrs. Reed, fifty percent to the gasoline tax fund, fifty percent to the general fund. The police commissioner, currently Mr. Stubbs, forty percent to the general fund, fifty percent to the police district fund, and ten percent to garbage and waste because of your position on the W R G, through Western Council Regional Government. Um, and then, Mr. Potter, you are a hundred percent to the general fund because zoning falls under general. My salary, forty percent general, twenty-five percent road through the gas tax fund, twenty-five percent to the police, ten percent to garbage. So that's how the salaries are currently allocated among the funds. So we're good with keeping the twenty-five percent reduction, and assuming that we're gonna do the same allocation, I think we're good here with the trustee and the fiscal officer's salary. My salary doesn't change in twenty twenty-two, but every one of you will have an increase next year, which is why you see a three thousand dollar raise. That may be more than we need, but I'd rather have more than, too much rather than too little. Are there any adjustments that you want to make to the police department budget?
I don't see any, no.
We have to decide about, say, if we just want to go with a three percent across-the-board increase in salaries for the all employees, or does that have to be decided tonight?
It would, we, we should decide it tonight, even though we approve it on Tuesday. So that was the second item I mentioned earlier, I forgot to get that resolved. Are you comfortable with three percent for all the employees?
Is that what you've asked for in yours? Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Was there a third item I said we needed to decide on?
Okay.
All right. So there's no changes to the police budget? We'll move on, thank you, Chief Hansik.
Thank you.
And this is closed for your hard work. I know that it was difficult for you as a first year doing it, so.
I had to talk her off, uh, the tower for, every day.
Can I, can I just ask a real quick question? If at the end, and you guys are, some of you are much better at budgets, two hundred and one thousand roughly is what, um, was your ending balance in twenty twenty-one, and you expect it to only be eighty-five at the end of twenty twenty-two. I mean, we talked about the possibility of having to go out for a levy, depending on what that looks like, because otherwise, the next year, you're in the hole over a hundred grand, correct? I mean, if you would spend two hundred thousand in twenty twenty-two, so your budget for twenty twenty-three would be negative one twenty.
Correct.
Okay.
If nothing changes.
If nothing changes, you're either pulling from the general fund or going out for a levy.
Right.
That was my question.
Okay, good with the police? We'll move on to the road department, and thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
And this is closed. Um, I sent you Mr. Holberg's form that he's done many years, this format, but I've taken his exact numbers, as I did with the police department, and put it into a spreadsheet that compares it to this current year as well as twenty twenty. And we'll go and look at each fund. The first one is twenty eleven, the motor vehicle license tax fund, uh, the estimated state motor vehicle tax, sixteen thousand, not expected to change. Um, the expenditures, if you want to talk about those, Mr. Holberg, in motor vehicle license?
Um, under motor vehicle license is basically, uh, there's, you'll see contracted services on pretty much all of my funds, and that's basically any roadwork that we hire out, that we don't do in-house, chip seal, paving, striping, that sort of thing. Um, other than that, most of that is repairs and maintenance. A lot of our, uh, daily purchases, not daily, but, uh, just all the purchases that don't fund them fall under capital improvements or, uh, specifics like fuel, salt, payroll, um, kind of fall into there, you know, you need a miscellaneous nut or bolt or, you know, whatever needs to be repaired falls under, under that. Um, but motor vehicle license tax is basically just that catch-all fund, which is the, uh, repairs and maintenance and contracted services. Now, you'll see, there is an equipment replacement in there, but there's, uh, no equipment that's on, in the twenty twenty-two budget for replacement this year.
The gas tax fund is the next fund. I am not proposing any increase in the revenue from gas tax. I think we've kind of settled into what driving is gonna be looking like, given where we are in the COVID pandemic. We're from home, I mean, a couple of years ago, we had the gas tax increase, but that's kind of settled into a number, and I think we're, a hundred and thirty-eight is the right number. Uh, when you get into the payments, the trustee and fiscal officer, same thing we talked about before, this is an allocation. In this particular case, it's an allocation for Mrs. Reed's, um, payments.
And under that, you'll also see some of the purchases that the road department makes are broke out, culverts and pipe. Uh, patching materials is, is mostly patching asphalt through the summer, um, gravel for either pipe replacement or vermin or whatever else might take that, uh, material. Um, sign replacement, signs get damaged or are no longer visible, we have money to, to switch those out. And obviously, the majority of the leftover goes into that improvement of sites, which is the same as contracted services. And also, you'll see there's no machinery replacement in that fund for this year either.
Under the road and bridge fund, this is our first, um, levy fund, and that, the real estate money there is exactly what the county has told me, including the homestead rollback, that those two in total represent what the county said. I did include the four thousand that we approved earlier this year to go forward with a, um, transfer out of the general fund into the road and bridge fund. So you'll see that four thousand dollars this year, you approved fourteen thousand, but then you approved four thousand going forward. And when we get to the, uh, I'll just let you explain the salaries, Mr. Holberg, and the other expenses.
The other expenses that come out of the road and bridge are, obviously, uh, Scott Hamilton and I's salary, um, our Medicare and hospitalization, um, there's some tax collection fees, is what the county charges us to, to collect the, to collect the road and bridge money, um, auditing services, contracted road repair, obviously, that's the other big one in there. Uh, second to our salaries, uh, we have our property insurance, which is all of our tools and equipment and motor vehicle insurance, and once again, you'll see there's no equipment that's gonna be purchased. And in the past, we have, you know, most of the time, when we buy a piece of equipment, it's so expensive, we don't buy it out of one fund. We have to split up the, the cost of, of. We have to split up the cost of, of replacing that piece of equipment through several funds. So, like I said, there's no, nothing on the, on the agenda that'd be purchased in 2022 under the road and bridge.
Okay, moving forward, the road levy fund is our shared fund with Germantown. Property tax, homestead rollback, that's the only money coming into this fund. And in the expenses, you'll see the payment to Germantown equal to their percentage based on the valuation of real estate in the incorporated area versus the unincorporated area.
Under the road levy and the next one, which is twenty-two thirty-one permissive motor vehicle license tax, you'll notice that the, these incomes on these two levies have kind of gone up a little bit. One being that we passed the replacement levy for the road levy, which upped the valuation of property taxes, so we are getting a little bit more for the road levy. And as you see, our payments, historically, historically, our payments to the city were right around sixty-five. Is that right? And they actually went up to ninety-some.
Last year, we gave them sixty-five, that was what was budgeted. We actually didn't do the calculation last year. This year, I did the calculation.
Right, and it went up to ninety-some.
Yeah.
And some of that was due to the fact that it was a replacement levy and the county said we were going to get more money.
Sure.
From that levy.
Twenty twenty-one versus twenty twenty was another sixty thousand.
Right. Due to the replacement.
Due to the replacement.
Right, and the permissive motor vehicle license tax, like Mr. Estand had mentioned earlier, we, uh, passed a resolution to add that extra five-dollar fee onto the motor vehicle license taxes. So you'll see that fund go up as well, twenty-some thousand.
I increased it by twenty-three thousand, and that was, or twenty-two something.
That was straight from.
The number you were actually given by the state when we first passed it.
So anyways, under the road levy, uh, the stuff that gets spent out of the road levy, we got our, the two employees, Opers and social security for the fiscal officer?
Yes.
Right. And.
And actually, Mr. Potter is also going to be there.
And Mr. Potter as well.
Yeah, he should be the road superintendent, because he's going to do social security.
Commissioner.
Commissioner.
Gotcha. Medical and hospitalizations, obviously, uh, our Scott and I's medical, dental, vision, workers' comp, auditing service, tax collection fees, election, we're not going to run an election this year. Phone, electric, natural, uh, it's actually LP gas, not natural gas. The payment to another political subdivision is Germantown's portion of that shared levy. Capital outlay, which is again, that contracted road repair, and no machinery and equipment out of that fund this year as well. That's as far as it, that's it for the road levy. A lot of my figures have stayed the same. I did manipulate some of the, uh, patching and things up in, up in the gas tax, but the rest haven't kind of stayed the same, except for anything that we get an increase at, whether it's property tax or medical or if we end up getting a cost of living. Those are the kind of things that kind of change my budget. Other than that, I think we're on to the permissive motor vehicle license tax. The board doesn't make questions under the road levy.
Questions? Any comments? Are we good with the road?
I think we're up to permissive now, if you want to.
Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry, I thought you were.
Let's see, you were given the income, or the income side of that. We're up, what did we say, about twenty-some, twenty-three thousand on the permissive motor vehicle license tax from last year? This is the first year we're going to start getting that money from the state. Once again, the two big things, the three big things out of permissive is fuel, deicing salt, and contracted road repair. That's historically the only things that we usually take out of permissive. In the years past, we have taken some cost of machinery out of there, if we buy a dump truck for the backhoe or something like that. But historically, when we don't have a big equipment purchase, it's just fuel, salt, and contracted road repair. And the salt, you'll see that at thirty thousand five hundred, that's kind of a guess. You know, we don't know what the weather's going to do. We are locked in at our salt price. Actually, we buy our salt through Southwest Purchasers for Government, which is a cooperative, cooperative bid through Montgomery County. A few years ago, they started doing a two-year bid. Instead of every year bidding it out, they would go out to bid and they'd say, okay, we want you to give prices for the next two years and lock it in. And the salt companies have done that. So we're on the second year of the two-year cycle. So I think our salt price is the same as it was last year. Which, if you remember, there was several years ago where we were paying, I mean, they were just gouging our eyeballs out on salt. It's well over a hundred dollars a ton. When I started, it was like thirty. So I think we're in like the seventy, seventy-five dollar a ton range now. But that's locked in, so we kind of plan for the worst, but if we don't use it all, that's a good thing. You know, if we do use it all, then we just start tapping into contracted road repair, make any additional.
How much of your year's supply can you store? All of it or not?
Depending on, depending on.
On the thirty thousand?
On the year, uh, let's see. About a quarter.
About a quarter.
About a quarter. We, worst-case scenario is three fifty to four hundred tons. We might add a hundred, but it's running out the front at a hundred tons. Yeah, that seventy dollars a ton price is to our door. And that's the way they bid it out, which makes it nice, we don't have to find our truck. You call the dispatch, that shows up, so. We get one bill.
I was just wondering if we could, just wanted to look up next year.
Oh, I have no doubt.
I was just wondering.
Yeah, we, I, I, you know, I, I wasn't in charge when they built that salt bin, but boy, it sure would have been nice to have a whole entire year's storage under that. Unfortunately, that wasn't the case. Other than that, I think I covered everything under the permissive. And like I said, you know, the road levy and permissive have gone up from years past, which is, you know, it's, it's helped the road department budget out a lot. We're not where I think we should be. I think our roads are still kind of in a, in a bad state of affairs. And I don't know if you remember, we tried to pass a road levy, what, four years straight? Three years straight?
Not really close.
I think that covers my budget.
Thank you. Any comments? Changes you'd like to see made?
I did notice, I looked at the hospitalization, um, that Mr. Potter brought that up, and it's about, it looks like it was three thousand in 2020, and in 2021, it was nineteen thousand, so it was a significant increase in that as well.
Yeah.
I think that's.
My son broke his butt.
Yeah, no, no, I think it's just across the board. I mean, it just.
Yeah, it's across the board, so it's got to be dealt with properly.
Well, and that's why we always, you know, when we budget, we do a budget for healthcare, you know, like, like we had talked about, we have what the healthcare costs for the road department, and then we have the deductibles. We always budget the high, just budget everything, you know, whether we use it or not. There's been, historically, Scott and I never recharge, you know, recharge max on a deductible. Well, this year, we, you know, I, I did, you know, my family did. Trust me, it wasn't by choice, but, but, yeah. So you just budget the max and then it's covered, but you'd like to see it, you'd like to see it carry over.
Unlike in the police budget, where all the cost of healthcare are in one account. The road department puts it in two different accounts and two different funds. In fund, uh, twenty-one forty-one, which is the road levy fund, is the the cost of the premium. But the.
Deductible.
Deductible, the stop loss, whatever the max is, all goes into the twenty thirty-one account, which is why, Mr. Holberg just explained it, it's budget significantly more than what his actuals have been, but that is the usage, you know, versus the premium. Okay, any comments, changes that you'd like to make? Hearing none, we can move on. Okay. The next one would be the sheet that includes the general fund and the garbage waste funds. The general fund, revenue, receipt, the real estate property tax, thirty-two thousand is a number given to me by the state. The local government distribution fund, uh, receipt is a number given to me by the state. The, I put in one cemetery payment for 2022. Some years, we get two. In 2021, we only received one. They owe us a little less than thirty thousand at this point on the loan we gave them to buy the land west of the cemetery.
I took that paper down, we're on the same page.
Are we?
Yes.
Good, glad to hear that.
So we're good.
Great. The eighteen thousand is the lease payment from the state of Ohio for the cell tower. And the other, uh, receipts that the license permits and the fees all come through the zoning department. We get some fines that come down from the county. The homestead rollback is in there too, that's something that we get from the county auditor, those numbers. Terms of the payments, the trustee salaries, again, I, I use the higher rates that the newly elected trustees will incur and balance that, of course, against keeping the allocations in the other funds that we talked about earlier. And mine won't change. Social Security, again, as was mentioned earlier, I'm on social security, which is allowed for any elected official. Mr. Potter has decided to do the same thing, so we will not, neither one of us are part of Opers. Which actually saves the township a fairly large amount of money because the township's contribution for Opers for non-police is fourteen percent versus six-point-two percent for social security. Big difference there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Remember that. The UAM fees are pretty well given by the auditor state. I don't see any increases coming here, they haven't told me about one. Laction expense is somewhat of an annual amount, about the same. The travel and meeting expense would cover whatever the trustees might decide to do, especially concerning the OTA conference next month in Columbus. We haven't, we didn't use that at all this year. Last year, we used a small, in 2020, we used a smaller amount. The property tax is somewhat of a given. Other expenses are an estimate. And there's the two payments to the water and sewer district. The four thousand that's going out for the bridge fund, road and bridge fund. The various utilities are estimates. Telephone, I bumped it down because we have some better rates now with all the work that was done with the SIP line this year. This is probably more than we need, but I left it a little higher than what it could have been. On the other side, electricity seems to be going up. I know that my personal bill this past month was significantly higher with less usage, which is not a good thing. So I think we're going to see some increases there. The zoning, same three percent salary increase. And that's the biggest thing in zoning is the salary. We've got operating supplies and other expenses. So the total I'm expecting, we're going to pay, or at the end of the year, we'll have one hundred ninety-eight thousand in the fund balance, about what we start with this year. Last year, we had a, a twenty twenty. We had a fairly significant increase. A lot of that was due to the workers' comp rebates. We received three of them throughout 2020 from the Workers' Comp Bureau at the request of the governor. And in 2021, we went up by about eighteen thousand, and that's just due to basic spending differences, so. Any questions about the general fund? Oh, there's one more thing I want to talk about. I forgot about this. In the, which, now is it? Sorry. It is, I think in other expenses. Line forty. You're all aware that we had some recent problems, or we discovered some recent problems with the ADT security system. It is no, not operable. We pay about ninety dollars a month for the use of the security system. It's that panic button right behind Mrs. Reed, another one in the zoning office. I think that's the only two. We also have a key card system that comes through ADT, but even though these aren't working, the key card is working. So our assumption is it's not based at all on the system that they provide to us at this point.
What I got out of my conversation with ADT was the thirty dollars a month or twenty-some dollars a month that of that ninety was a maintenance agreement for the key card system. So I believe the key card system is standalone. It's not monitored, ADT doesn't do anything to make that work. Now, obviously, if something were to go wrong with it, I don't know if ADT would cover the cost of the repairs. I kind of doubt it. Having a maintenance agreement, I, I don't know that Lori did all that when she was here. And I had to kind of get some information from Shawna just to even call ADT and find out, who do I talk to to even test this thing? And that's when we found out that, you know, it wasn't working.
How long it hasn't been working for?
I can only assume the lightning strike. Where we lost all the computers and the generator, uh, transfer switch, remember all that? That was back, what, spring?
I had to push the button just to see if it worked.
It didn't do anything. Well.
We never tested.
No, I think it would be.
It doesn't make any noise. It just, it's, it, all it does is it contacts ADT, ADT calls dispatch, dispatch calls the police. Joe gets a call while he's sitting here.
But it would be nice if it, you know.
So that, that's how it's supposed to work.
Yeah.
So with that being said, you know, if the board decided not to pay anything, I think the key card system would still work. It's my assumption.
I think it comes down to, do we want to repair this system or do we want to just forego it? I believe it was installed about six years ago. It is an analog system, I believe, so it's not even state-of-the-art.
Is there a reason why we installed it?
Yes. That was kind of when we were having the Harris Hapner stuff and.
Hard to remember.
And, uh, things got kind of tense in, in the zoning office and in this, in the meeting rooms. And that was when it was installed, so.
It's such a, can I have a police officer here if we need that?
Oh, yeah.
Have a button?
Like, if you're having a meeting.
If we're having.
Many times, they, someone is contacting you, say, hey, we're having a meeting, can you have an officer there? Sure.
I don't think the, the meeting room necessarily needs one. And I'm not.
If we needed one.
Right, I'm, I'm not sure we do. Because most of the time, Joe's here. At the trustee meeting.
Right, but you have other meetings like zoning.
Right.
And, you know, if someone was to, uh, Jeremy's dad used to have a group that would come in, they'd play music. You know, if somebody had a heart attack and none of the phones were, they could pull on that button, at least somebody would come.
Right.
So there's, there's pros and cons to it. The cons, but now everybody's got. Exactly. I think zoning the office, I think if you're going to keep one of them, that's the one I would keep. Because
Probably the same
I'm not saying zoning upsets people, but that is a place where people are more likely to
I don't know.
Come out of rape and
A meeting.
Trash. Well, trash, she can go across the hall and use the button. But yeah, this button here, many times there's an officer, and if you needed an off, or you foresaw needing an officer, we just schedule one to be here.
That's right. I'm, I'm new at all this, so I'm just asking questions.
Yeah.
I'm going to thank you if you got one or two or ten, probably all the same money.
Right. I, I would, I, I don't, that I don't
I don't, if you want to
Do you see the
The one in there.
Do you see a need of keeping one in your office?
I would like one in my office.
I think that, I think here, right, many, this is not as necessary as one there. Because many times you're talking, your hours are in the evening, nobody's here, maybe the officer's out on patrol. I've gone home, she's sitting here alone, maybe her phone, you know, to actually grab it, to actually get into and dial something, but just hitting that button, because it's like a little trigger if you look at it. Just pull that button, somebody should be coming at that point.
Right.
And you can worry about getting away, defending yourself, those kinds of
A lot of those buttons don't make any noise, aren't supposed to make any noise when you pull them. It's a silent alarm, which
Don't know if it's working yet.
Right. But also if
I've got a question about these buttons.
Who is?
Address.
One-one-eight-five-eight Oxford, Lynn, Cleveland. Why are these buttons not tested on a monthly basis?
You know, that is just something that, you know, they put them in, we never, we didn't do. I mean, we walk out here and test this phone once a month, because all it does is go straight to dispatch, and we want to make sure if somebody needs it, they can use the blue light phone out on the corner.
I tried that phone before and it didn't work.
Really?
Yes.
Well, it's supposed to be tested every Friday.
Every Friday.
I'm saying is, if you got a fire alarm.
You at least test, test it once a year, well.
Monthly, you test the fire alarm system, monthly you test the security system, monthly you test any kind of system. I would not know when it's quit working. I, I blame you, Jeremy, I'm just saying.
I don't, I don't have access to Haley's office, so to test that one.
I'm just saying, push the button and have ADT on the phone, push the buttons, and did you get the alarm?
I do like that it's a silent alarm, because historically alarms can trigger people to become violent when they're already agitated, because they don't like the answers that they got.
Well, all I can say is if she thinks
I would appreciate
More comfortable with it, I, I can't judge that for her.
I mean, unless you guys want your zoning inspector to continue carry, I'm also okay with that, but
You're not supposed to carry him here.
Right.
I thought her pretty good.
I'm, I'm getting the feeling that we're going to cut it, and so let's get it repaired.
Get it fixed and tested on a regular basis.
So Mr. Olberg, you can follow up, because you have that contact information. Okay, so that doesn't change that line item law in the budget. Okay, any comments, changes you'd like to see to the general fund? Okay, let's move on to the trash fund. For several years now, the trash fund balance has been falling because we haven't kept up with the fees that we charge our residents with the increases that we get from waste management. And that was an intentional thing that you all did as trustees over the years. We're beginning to drop it, you can see just since the beginning of twenty-twenty, to what I'm now expecting at the end of twenty-twenty-two, you know, we're down almost fifty thousand. So at some point in the future, we're going to have to deal with that. I'm not recommending that you do that, anything this coming year, but at some point you're going to want to. Because right after the first of the year, I got to pay forty-five thousand dollars to waste management. So we always have to have enough to be able to do that.
So, so what are we not passing along?
So the, we're in the WRCG, so we, we along with Jackson, Farmersville, and Perry Township, contract with Rumkey. Rumkey, we have a, is it every three years at this point? Every three years, it can either go out to bid, or we have a built-in renewal for three years. We're in the built-in renewal right now. They have increased the price three percent per year. Problem is, last time we went out for bid, they were the only
Only bid?
The only bid, after we had multiple, the whole way through. So it was a risk for us, the last time we just, we took the renewal, didn't want to risk.
I, I
Right.
Then that
Then they increase our fee, and then we have not passed that along to our residents in, what, five years at least? We've not, I don't think we've increased it. At least in five, six years.
Fifteen percent, three percent each year for five years.
At least.
Through the first, do you know when the first
No, I don't have that.
I'm just saying, a little bit each year is better than a lot.
Right.
One year.
Right. At some point, we'll have to increase it somewhere around, probably to around sixty dollars a quarter, would be my guess.
I think what he's saying is if we increase it even two percent now, it's better than increasing it ten percent next year. Residents aren't going to take too kindly to the giant increases that
A little each year.
Yeah. So we, we had built up a little bit, and that's why, you can see where we started, that's why we did not, we were trying to
I, I agree, but once we start, probably under, you need to adjust.
You're right.
I think a year from now, you might want to consider trying to match about where the current pricing is. But of course, you also have to take their price and all the other expenses too. My salary that goes in there, the trustee salary that goes in there, the Suel salary, which is a hundred percent in there, and all the other miscellaneous expenses. So you're right, I mean, in another year or so, we're going to be close to a hundred in the fund balance.
I have a question about this, one-one-eight-five-eight Oxford Road.
What time?
I lived in the township for sixteen years, thinking my trash bill was being paid by my taxes. I moved into a house that was a rental house before I moved into it. I had three different garbage cans when I moved here, three different, three different companies before we went to the Rumkey thing. And finally, after sixteen, seventeen years, and I, and I told the trash department about this, that I had never received a bill. Never paid a bill. Now I got a bill. I'm like, I'm like, okay, I'll pay a bill, because it's my bill. How many other people are out, are there out here? That have never received a bill for their trash? How many people are, the rest of us that are paying our bill paying for? Rumkey just goes down the road, picks up every can on the road. How many other people are there out here that have never paid a trash bill? Any of us ever, any of y'all ever looked at that?
Like an audit.
Like an audit.
Lori did audit it.
I don't know, I had someone reach out to me, was that maybe three years, two, it came to the trustees because they had lived there several years, they had never got a bill, and it was being sent, the house had been sold, and it was being sent to someone's house in Kettering.
Right, somewhere
Paying it.
Lori put out a, a sheet one time, and I looked on the sheet, my name on there, because we were looking at the, the, if you've gone three bills from now, you know, we
Is that your tax?
Yeah. I looked on the sheet, my name wasn't even on there, my address was not on, not my name, my address was not on there.
The same thing happened to me when I moved into my house in twenty-sixteen.
How many other people in the township don't get a tax bill, have never, not a tax bill, a trash bill? Have never paid their trash bill? And there's just a guy going, I never got a bill, I'm not paying. I mean
None needs to be checked into.
Yeah. Because right now, we got fifty thousand dollars in the bucket. Why can't we have a hundred thousand dollars in the bucket, we get more people paying their trash bill?
It just doesn't even be unbilled. I, I mean, I think that, that's been brought up a few times, I think that's a good, I don't know how you go about doing it, I think that might be a
I mean, I, I pay my trash bill once a year.
Just get everybody's address for the whole township and just check it off, that's, that's what you have to do.
I get, I get trash bills for vacant land that I got to fight against.
Do you have any trash on that vacant land?
No. And they'll take it off, but they don't sure send you a bill for it.
That's what I'm saying, I just, I think we probably need to audit this tra, whole trash thing. We've talked about this for years, about why, why are we, is everybody paying their bill? When I first moved here, there'd be a Rumkey truck coming down the road, whatever the blue truck was back then. And then another truck, I didn't know who was picking up my trash. And then we went to the whole big conglomeration of, we all get about the same person. I had one person doing recycle, one person doing trash. Yeah.
Well, now, as a trash billing clerk, it's, it's definitely a flawed system. If I move out of my house, the, the bill is associated with the property. So if I move out of my house, it's basically an honor system, I call and say, listen, I'm moving out as of this date, and if I can't give, you know, or Haley moves out, she can't give me the new owner's name, I can't change it. And if they don't call me and say, hey, I need to set up, you know, the trash, my name, I can't change it. So that's when it keeps getting forwarded to the previous owner, and then the bill adds up, and then it finally, eventually gets changed, and there's hundreds of dollars on, you know what I mean? It's definitely a flawed system. I don't know how we fix that, but it's basically an honor system.
How many, how many times have we had that over the last few years, where somebody comes in and says, hey, I just moved here, and I got a bill for the last four months, or, you know,
Yeah.
Six, six months.
Because the way that I was taught was, was the bill, again, stays with the property. So if, if you didn't pay your trash bill for the last three years, you, you sell the house, and many owners move in, and they get a bill for, you know, a hundred dollars.
Those people appear here, you know.
They, they come in and say
They come up here and ask you guys to forgive it, or
Yeah.
And I was told that, that Realtors are supposed to disc, or someone is supposed to disclose that to them, but it never happened.
A couple of years ago, after we had, we had quite a few come in, we had talked about how it'd been like a form letter, if you will, sent out to local Realtors to just, as like a friendly reminder to them, like, hey, if you're purchasing a home in the township, or maybe it's something that needs to happen like on a yearly basis, just that any local Realtor that, that way they know to tell, tell the buyers.
There's a flyer gets sent out to every address for an election or a levy. Is there some way of sending out a
Well, I don't think you're going to get it, I don't think you're going to get a response from a flyer, because there is
No. If we don't get it back, then we know.
Well, that's true. Yeah.
I mean, it's just an idea.
We need to do something about that, I mean, you know.
Send it back, and if they don't send it back, then we'll have to have
I told, I've told Lori for years that I didn't, I've never received a trash bill. Finally, she caught up with me.
She said she gave me a bill for sixteen years.
I was saying, the trash thing, I think we need to do something about that, we need to discuss that.
I've also heard, like, people calling me because the trash office doesn't have very many hours saying that they've never received a trash bill, and I tell them to leave a message to the trash office and we'll get to you. But like, they'd say that they've never received a bill, which with the system the way it is, I think tells me that nobody lives there, so they got a return, and then they got taken off of the mailing list, and then the property was sold, but the system doesn't pick up on that. So then the new owner just never received a bill, and they just get free trash. At least that's my theory. I can only assume.
Needs to be discussed.
Yeah, we turn in the number of households to Rumkey, and that's how, that's how Rumkey posts us, we turn in the number of households.
Right.
We know how many households, so we'll, we'll have to look into that.
We should know how many bills we're giving out.
Yep.
Same amount of bills.
I'm going to give you that number, I can tell you exactly how many bills I just sent out.
Well, and I mean, are they updated? So like, the number that you give to Rumkey is not updated on a yearly basis, because there's homes built, you know, like, a lot, but you probably have maybe five or six homes built. How many homes were built this year?
A lot.
Okay. Home is built, does that reflect the new number that was given to Rumkey?
Yeah, every time we do a new contract.
You give them the
It should be the updated number.
Okay. And it should be, I should know if it was actually
Can we pull that number from the auditor? The county?
Lori always did it, I, so I, I've never sent the number in.
I was not taught that.
Yeah.
I mean, we
Hasn't been updated.
Well, we haven't had contracts.
So we're doing good, I mean.
Like two hours crash course time.
No, no.
I wasn't. No, no, I know, it's, I'm like, this is new to me, I have no idea.
No, so we haven't done a contract in years.
Well, I'm just saying, if we give, if we give Rumkey how many residents we have, we should have that many bills going out.
Right.
And, and if we don't, then, I can, we'll start right there.
Okay, Harris, one of the things on the zoning commission we often ask ourselves is, how do other townships do this? They may already have a solution.
True, so Kristen at Jackson is, she's, she's good, so, she's also newer.
All right. Good discussion.
Get her on.
Takes us back to the budget. Trash. Revenue receipts, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand is what I'm expecting, just like it is this year, for the actual charges. We also get about twenty thousand a year from the county for those assessments for people who don't pay their bills, and we assess to the county auditor, and they put on the tax duplicate. So that's what our revenues are. The expenses, obviously, the biggest one is Rumkey. Hostage is somewhat of a big one. Other expenses, I'm not even sure what, I mean, basically that's the catch-all for everything else. We do about, what, three hours a week typically of, of salary.
Uh, it, it depends, now, like, the bill just went out, so the next couple of weeks, I'll have so much coming in, it'll be fire.
But if we average it over a whole year, probably three or four hours a week at the most. So anyway, any changes you want to see to the trash fund? Hearing none, I'm going to assume the answer is no. Okay, let's move on to the last category, which is our, all the other funds, primarily our shared revenue funds. We have the park levy, the pool levy, the fire levy, the senior citizen levy, the fire EMS, the second levy for them from two thousand and ten. Those five different funds. And given what Mr. Keener said earlier in the evening, I think that I should revise all of this pending a review of the documentation and the agreements, and bring you new numbers on Tuesday. I probably will not get an opportunity to review all those agreements in detail, depending on how long, how big they are. But if nothing else, we'll budget it similar to what we paid this year.
Yeah, that was, the ten percent, I think, was on each one, if I remember right, it's been years since we met with Judy. But it's definitely, definitely good to hold that money back just in case, like, especially what, like, he brought up the pool liner, that's the only reason we were able to pay and have a pool season that year, is because we had the money set back aside, so.
I will say about the fire ones, just from being on the fire oversight, that, and Mr. Cleveland, please feel free to jump in, because he was also at that meeting, Mr. Heathrow was as well. I believe, thinking back to that meeting, that the fire department is going to have to possibly go into the general fund, maybe not this year, but possibly next year, I think it was going to happen in twenty-twenty-two. And so if we have those extra funds that we're holding, and I understand that, that our belief is, is maybe the spending of the city, that if our taxpayers voted to give that money, then we have to follow whatever that agreement is. I believe that's the way the taxpayers voted, so we have to follow through with that. And so instead of having the fire department go into the general fund And so instead of having the fire department go into the general fund, look at that money that we don't have to dip into their general fund if we have the money sitting in the levy fund.
But the, in, per the agreement, we'll have to look at them, it specifically states.
If it's ten percent, yes, then that would have to be, now is that ten percent? So if you get a, I'm just gonna pose that, you get a hundred grand a year, do you save the ten percent every year? Does it, ten percent adds up?
Well, we'll have to look into that.
And see what it says.
I, Mr. Keener indicated that was probably the situation annually, a ten percent of what comes in. So it would accumulate, uh, but I would like to verify that. So I will revise the, simply to do a number similar to what we did this year. Uh, and actually, I'll make it nine, even better. I'll make it ninety percent of the money that the taxing authority says we're gonna get from them.
And let's not forget their creative accounting for their administrative fees.
Sorry, what?
Their creative accounting at the city for their administrative fees they charge us every year.
Well.
About eighty-five, ninety thousand dollars a year. It's not going where the taxpayers are voting for, so.
Yeah, that doesn't affect me.
That's another, that's a comment for another day, I guess.
Okay, so that takes care of the first five funds in, in, in this two-page report. American Rescue Plan Act Fund. I haven't budgeted anything into the appropriations. We haven't talked about that yet. I think that's a discussion that when that time comes, we will do a resolution to appropriate whatever we want to do next year. And of course, we have all the way through twenty twenty-five to spend that money. I did, however, put in the receipt of the other hundred and fifty-one thousand next year. The Sunbury Perpetual Care Fund, we haven't spent money there the last two years. I, I, I don't think that happens very often, so I haven't budgeted anything for that. I did, under the bounce trust fund, put in two thousand for next year. If you're comfortable with that, we'll do that.
Yep.
At some point, and I don't remember, Dr. Cross, you'll probably be able to help me when you come, come in next year, how much we can go down until we hit principal, until we hit the original principal. And I don't remember what that number is, but I think we're still far away from that number. So, um, if you, if you're comfortable with two thousand, I think we're good for that to next year.
But just for Lou's benefit, I think it's the same on the Sunbury Cemetery request is that we can't touch the principal, is that correct?
That's correct.
So we're, there's, how much is in there?
Uh, fifty-four hundred.
Fifty-four hundred bucks and how much of that is principal? Probably both. So you see why there's not much.
That's why I was asking, are you expecting?
And we asked the permission to use that and.
Yeah, we asked permission from the Coon family if we could dip into the principal and they would rather, they said we'd rather you not, so we honored that.
Right, I, I just didn't know if you knew of anything painting with that, sure.
As, as far, so far, I mean, we've been kind of holding it back in case we get any stone damage because, I mean, you know, with the ash trees and, that, that's surrounded by at least two sides, the long side and the short side of just your woods. So, um, imagine tree lands come out, they recatac on the headstones.
So with three dollars a year interest, we're not gonna be spending very much out there. Okay, that takes me through all the budgets for next year. I will make some of the revisions we talked about and have some numbers for you on Tuesday to, to approve for, uh, the appropriations. So moving on to the next item on the agenda, and that is to potentially appoint regular members and alternate members to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And as you are probably aware, we have four terms on the two boards that expire at the end of twenty twenty-one. We have a regular member and an alternate on each board whose terms expire. The regular members are appointed for five-year terms. Alternate members are appointed for two-year terms. There will also be another alternate position on the zoning commission, uh, that, that will be open next year because Dr. Cross currently sits in that alternate position and will obviously resign from that when he moves to the board at the beginning of January. Mrs. Sewell has asked that the trustees go into executive session to discuss these appointments. And I've given you the language that, um, the prosecutor has asked that we use to go into executive session.
May I just make a comment before that, Mark?
Yeah, go ahead.
I thought it was determined that, uh, basically these appointments and reappointments weren't gonna be determined until after the first of the year. So what, what is the rush to do it tonight? Because even in, uh, in the minutes to the regular board meeting on December thirteenth, Mrs. Sewell noted she would advise the trustees in January as to which members are interested in being reappointed.
Is there any reason to do it?
You can wait till January if you'd like.
I would like to do the executive session, but obviously wait until next year to appoint.
Uh, I'd rather wait till the new board takes over for the executive session as well.
That's fine. I would just like to do the executive session before the appointment.
So can we add that to our organizational meeting or do you want to do that at the r- regular meeting?
The organizational meeting doesn't have a specific agenda attached to it. I think we probably could do it on Tuesday.
Okay.
But let me look and see what we've done in the past in that regard. It's certainly not a typical, well, actually it is, because we make other appointments. Okay, let's do it on Tuesday.
Okay. That'll work. All right.
Again, my question, yes, you, I O R C, you can enter into executive session for that purpose. Why is that gonna occur? I mean, why do you think you need to go into executive session? And it's something that. Well, no, you can have to answer that, but I'm, I'm just saying, that is the job of the trustee over the zoning department to contact the members to see if they want to be reappointed. Not really, I think, something that should be done in behind closed doors. And, and again, ideally that decision is, is made by the trustee over the zoning.
Which would be?
Which would be you tonight or possibly me Tuesday, yes. And I'm just, just saying my, my opposition to going into an executive session for that purpose. I think this can ha, be handled by the zoning commissioner, and which is what it's always been, been, uh, worn by that person. By that person getting a hold of the, the possible reappointees or new appoint, putting on and out for, for new appointments.
Right.
Can I, can I possibly make suggestions? So I know, um, you're questioning about going into executive session and then there was some talk about waiting until Tuesday because, um, the new board would be, but you're curious about why you're going to executive session.
Well, we, we don't have to answer that because, you know, you don't really, there's something secret, we don't, you know, you can't say that.
I, I agree.
I'm just saying, I, I, I'm, I'm in opposition to, to doing it that way. I think the, the traditional way has been for the zoning commissioner to ask the, the people whose terms are ending to see if they want to re-up. That is a one-to-one, you know?
No, I understood that. My only, I guess, suggestion, if you know what I was making is, I know, um, it's been a while since we went to executive session, quite a while actually. And if it's something where we go into executive session and prior to January, tomorrow at midnight, when you're in office, you could be invited in, because we've done that in the past, right? We've invited.
We could invite them.
Anybody.
Yeah, that, that, I, yeah, that's what I, that's the only thing I was suggesting. But that is something that you want to be, everybody wants to be a part of, I think that that is something that is doable. That was my only suggestion.
I think we'll wait till first of the year.
We can do it tonight and invite him in. I, I mean, it's not, I didn't want to do it before he was, that's not a.
I don't think we're talking about.
It, no.
Electing or contacting somebody.
Correct.
And I think that should be the avenue you first go into before you decide on an executive session.
I, I believe, um, just the items are more personal.
There's personal reasons that's been discussed with our attorney to specifically go into executive session for those reasons.
Yeah.
Well, it's gonna be, you know, if you're not doing it tonight, it's gonna be up to the trustees on, on Tuesday. You have to vote to go into an executive.
So I will say that I will not discuss what I need to discuss unless I'm in an executive session.
I, I'm saying that the zoning commissioner should handle all that, all that, that, uh, appointments and reappointments. I don't think it should be up to the zoning inspector.
No, I'm not discussing.
She's wanting to do that, she's wanting to talk about something.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I. I can do that.
Or not appoint anybody.
I'll, I'm gonna make a resolution to go into executive session.
Only a motion.
A motion to go into executive session, um, to discuss the public, appointment of a public employee or official. Oh, I read.
Nope, nope, right there, yes.
All right, I moved, you want to executive session, per se, went to, um, revised code one twenty-one, point two-two, G-one, to consider the appointment of a public employee or official.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll say it.
Any discussion on the motion before I do a roll call?
I would prefer to wait till January.
Any other discussion?
Mark can come in.
Right.
If I'm concerned.
Well, I think as a board, you decide who can go into an executive session. You can invite whomever you wish.
I, I, I understand that. I'm just saying, I don't think this is the way to go, right?
We're not going to be.
I know, you can't, you can't make a decision in there, you can just discuss. You cannot make any decisions in executive session. I'm, I'm saying this is the, I don't.
I'm not for sure what she's wanting to say. The only way that I can figure out what she wants to say is to go in that room.
Well, as zoning.
Well, when the discussions are over, we'll vote. I'm, I'm also new at this, so I'm not trying to, well, nobody tells. But we're not going to be making any decisions tonight.
Yeah, but you're going to be discussing important issues, I have a feeling. I, I'm just saying that.
I think typically the trustee over zoning would have dealt with whatever situation that we're going to executive session for. And just the trustee that's over zoning and you would make that decision and then make the recommendation to the board. So the fact that we're going into executive session, we're kind of skipping a step where the trustee over zoning should be making that decision.
I think, right?
Well, yes, but you could have.
Maybe because it could change.
Right, either way, but I, and I still think that the trustee over zoning, you need to meet with the trustee over zoning and discuss what, whatever it is. And if that trustee, whoever it is, decides that we need to have an executive session after that point, then we could have an executive session. But I don't, I think we're skipping a step and that's where I'm at.
She has talked to me earlier in the month about this. So I, from, from what, we're, we're not making no decision tonight, we're only just talking. So she has talked to me about it and it's worth a discussion in my opinion.
Are we ready to vote?
Yeah.
Mr. Stubbs?
No.
And Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
So at nine oh nine, we are moving into executive session and who are we inviting in?
Mr. Cross. Mark Cross.
Mrs. Sewell.
Am I?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Does the board mind if Chief and I?
No, you can leave.
No, you can go.
Yep.
It's been a long day for you guys.
It is nine eighteen, I'll make a motion to return from executive session.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are back in regular session at nine eighteen. All right, um, the last item I have deals with, um, our OPERS conversion plan. We learned last year that this is something that is necessary to execute with OPERS in order for vacation and sick time that gets cashed out by employees to be considered earnable salary. Otherwise, it does not go into their OPERS, um, account, for lack of a better word, um, discussing or accumulating how much they earn every year. So, uh, this became a problem a couple of years ago, uh, twenty twenty, I guess it was, when we paid a couple of these out and it did not go into their OPERS earnings. So I have given you a, a copy of the resolution, but I think we can read it in, in summary form by using the language in my report.
Forty-seven, forty-eight?
Uh, that would be forty-eight.
All right, I will.
Yeah, I, I think you can just use that.
All right, I would like to introduce Resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-eight, a resolution authorizing the fiscal officer to execute annual conversion plan for twenty twenty-two, the Ohio Public Employees Retirement System.
I will second.
Any discussion of the resolution? Hearing none, um, I will call the roll. Mr. Stubbs?
Yes.
Mrs. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Potter?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-one forty-eight is adopted. I am done with everything that was put into the special meeting notice. So I think at this point, we could take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned at nine twenty. I think that clock's wrong.
Nine twenty, yep.